Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, we can begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military at home and abroad and for their families. Thank you. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berika?
Here.
Counsel Flaherty?
Here.
Counsel Hume?
Here.
Counsel Mackin will not be attending this evening. Counsel Maglio?
Here.
Counsel Orion will not be attending this evening. Counsel Reynolds?
Here.
Counsel Ringus will not be attending this evening. Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our announcements this evening. I'm extremely pleased to have with us tonight the Director of the Crispin Center, Anne Tolan, to provide us with the update from the Crispin Center for their holiday drives. Thank you so much, Ms. Tolan, and please join us at the podium.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having given me the opportunity to come and speak again about the center, my favorite subject. We've had a very, very busy year with so many people with COVID issues and employment issues. The food pantry is really booming right now. We did join the mayor's community task force at the beginning of the COVID, and we developed a delivery system for elders and for disabled people, anybody with immune issues, and we've continued it. We do it every two weeks, and we have probably about 30, 35 orders that we deliver, and they're custom orders, we call, see what they need. And then we have curbside service Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and it's from 10:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon, and everybody can come every other week for groceries, and they get ample groceries. I was able to distribute some statistics from the end of the last year, as we do every year, and the numbers have increased so tremendously. We distributed 64,588 pounds of food just from the retail stores in greater Boston over 2022. We have some very generous businesses here in town, Target, Panera. We have Shaw's has been doing a tremendous amount of donations with us. We have Richmond Hardware. They have receptacles in the store, and they do food collections, and they deliver the food to us every other week, and it's been a tremendous help. And we have Kentucky Fried Chicken up in Weymouth, very generous, and Panera Bread every week, and Cumberland Farms, we have done a huge amount of work with them, too. In addition to all the businesses, the different school organizations, clubs, and most of all the residents, very, very generous community, and it's been a privilege for me to see the generosity of people that come forward to help every year, and especially during this past couple of years, I think people have been more aware of the needs of others, and it's very heartwarming to see. And we are about to go into our holiday program, and that's really what I'm here to talk about, right? We will have our Thanksgiving program, and that will be frozen turkey with all the fixins, and our distribution is the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. The McDonough family is tremendous every year with supplying our turkeys. I think there was 175 butterball turkeys last year that we got from them, and we have other organizations and clubs that have put together the fixins to go with the turkey dinner, and those are given out, and the highway department also does a lot of the deliveries for the shut-ins, and we try to get them like a small turkey breast or chicken, a lot of them, something small. But the highway department does that on the Monday morning of Thanksgiving week. And then we kind of roll into the Christmas program. The town has the toy party. It's scheduled for the 7th of December, a Thursday night, and I believe this year it's going to be up at Sons of Italy. We'll have some information to put out with that. The following week, we've decided to do Christmas distribution a little bit earlier in order to give the parents and grandparents a little bit of time to make sure they have everything in order for Christmas, and also it's easier on the volunteers that come in. If we have it too close to Christmas, it's a little chaotic. So we are going to do distribution the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the 13th, 14th, and 15th of December. Both distributions are at 74 Pond Street. The toys will all be set up for the Christmas distribution, and I hope if you have an opportunity, come over and see it before we even open, if you want, or when we open. It's always great to see everybody come in and just see how much work has been done. The volunteers are great, but all the businesses that come in and help us, some of the workers from different companies, they come in, they have their workers come in to help us, and then all the departments in town. It's always quite an experience to be there and see. And the launch program, they come in to do a lot of the work, both for Thanksgiving and for Christmas. They carry out the bundles and help the people shopping and everything, so it's a fun experience. And it's amazing to know the generosity of a community like this. It really is wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you so much, Anne, and thank you for all of your work and dedication to the Crispin Center, which I think we talked about last week, but bears repeating, it's just celebrated their 50th anniversary of service.
Wasn't it fun?
It was. Service to our community.
Fifty years of the food pantry we celebrated a couple of weeks ago. It was the 50th anniversary of the food pantry and the holiday program, and it was 35 years for our daycare center, and it was nice to celebrate Marge Crispin and Dawn and the family. And Bill, the son, came in from California and spoke at the event, and it was wonderful to hear about all his family experiences, and to know we're carrying on the legacy is really good. It's good.
So I want to let my colleagues have a chance to ask questions, but for families who may need a little bit of help this holiday season, whether for Thanksgiving or Christmas or both, what is the best way for them to get in touch with the center?
Okay, we have the applications. We started with the applications last week. Anybody can come over to the center, preferably Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, when the food pantry is open, and they fill out their application. They bring proof of residency. With children, they just bring a copy of a birth certificate just to look at. We don't hold any information over at the center, it's just to be verified. And then they're given a receipt so that when they come to distribution, we've already have on record, so we know they've got a four-year-old girl and a six-year-old boy, and that way we know we have enough items for the population of children we're going to help. Also, it gives us an idea of how many meals we're going to provide. We are thinking that because we're doing Christmas early for distribution, for one thing, and because of the logistics of not enough freezer space, like over at Pond Street, we might do ample amounts of grocery gift cards, because it's more than 10 days away, so in order for us to properly take care of everybody, I think it'd be good to, if we could, zero in on gift cards for that and make sure that they have enough for whatever they're going to have for the holidays. We will have like tables set up with cake. We always do like cake mixes and odd things that they can take on their way out if they want to, plus all the toys, and we're having a, every year we have a pajama drive, and this year it's going to be Life Community Church. Pastor Wilson usually has the event up at church. We have a couple of groups now, they're going to be doing sweatshirts, and I have a couple of companies that do a limited amount of winter jackets for children, so we'll have all that out. Couple of women's groups crochet and knit hats and scarves and the things for children, so there's a lot to pick out for, you know, when they come in. We have tables out displaying all the things, and we have volunteers that help them shop, plus all the toys.
Excellent. Yeah, no, thank you. And so for residents who, the Crispin Center is located at 46 Lincoln Street?
Yes.
Braintree, and I think we have the number to call if they need to call, it's 781-848-2124.
Yes.
So if you can't make it over there, please call, leave a message, you'll get a return call.
Some of our elders that we deliver to, we're taking those apps, we're talking to them over the phone.
Great.
They don't have to come in to fill out an application, because we deal with them all year round, but for anybody. We will have the 15th, that Friday, we have a couple of hours of grandparents' day, and up to four grandchildren, they can come in and get a few items for their grandchildren. So that's on the Friday.
That's on December 15th?
Yes.
Excellent. That's a great service.
And they fill out the applications, too, so we know ahead of time that we would have proper items. And when the kids are like 12 and over, they get a combination of gifts and small denomination gift cards, so we make sure we have those for them, too.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Anyone on the council? Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you so much for all of the wonderful work that you do for this community through these.
It takes a group effort. It's not one person that does anything.
Many people participate.
Yes.
But you organize it.
And just direct traffic.
I wanted to ask two things. One, you mentioned that you distributed 10,268 bags of groceries to 1,092 households.
Yes.
And all the households are in Braintree, right?
Yes.
So I was.
Ninety-nine percent. If somebody came and it's an emergency, and they were from somewhere else, we would give them a limited amount. Some communities, their food pantries have only opened one day a week, and if they miss the day, we.
I'm glad we do that. I'm so glad. But my question, what I'm curious about is, how many households are there in Braintree? There's only, there's less than 40,000 people, so I. 14,000 households. So you serve 1/14 of our community through this initiative?
It's kind of amazing to me. You know, people get into either health situations or they have employment issues. Sometimes it's somebody that just temporarily needs help, and we're very happy to be there. You know, people are out of work for one reason or another, but it's amazing when people get back on their feet. It's very heartwarming to see them come in to pay back. They come back and help, and they help for a long time. They really do.
The other question that I have is, are there particular products that are especially in demand in the Marge Crispin Center as far as food is concerned?
I've been thinking of that, because we did discuss that at a different time, and cereal. We go through a lot of cereal. You know, somebody with a couple of kids at home, and especially during the COVID time, when they were home all the time, you know, we went through a lot of foods that were geared to children, of course peanut butter jelly, all the canned soups we use a lot of, and SpaghettiOs, lots of SpaghettiOs. But the Cheesecake Factory, about three weeks ago, I got a call, and they have a community service day, and this year they collected peanut butter, and I got 450 jars of peanut butter. I couldn't believe it when they came in, but we have shared them with father bills and a couple of sober houses and safe houses, and then we did Weymouth, a couple of organizations in Quincy, so we share a lot in the food pantries in the area. We have a hunger network program, and when we are overloaded with things, we pass them on, so nothing gets wasted. I might get a call that somebody's got an ample amount of product, and we get it. Another thing we look for, too, is juice, fruit juice, even the little juice boxes. We go through tons of them, but Target gives us a lot of those, too. We get some from Target, and Shaw's just gave us some, too, because we're low on them. But we go to greater Boston, we're part of Greater Boston Food Bank, and we go every other Wednesday, tomorrow's the day, and we've ordered 2108 pounds of food, and that includes meat products, all of the dairy products, produce, and then the non-perishable items, and a limited amount of paper products, too. We do have to go out and buy some of the paper products for the pantry, but so tomorrow's a big day.
Well, thank you for everything that you do. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you. I'm glad I thought of the juice, though, too. We go through a lot of fruit juices.
Well, thank you so much, Anne, for being here. Everybody, please save the date, December 7th, for the annual holiday party for the Crispin Center. And again, that number, if you would like to donate or if you need help, please call The Marge Crispin Center located at 46 Lincoln Street, so thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next announcement, I do want to announce thank you to Counselor Maglio, who has agreed to serve as the counselor on the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee that will be addressing issues in the Ford River Basin and the Drytown area. So counselors, in addition to serving on this body twice a month, serve on multiple committees, and we're grateful for your service, Counselor Maglio, and adding that to your plate, so thank you, and we'll be looking forward to the updates. I also want to, while we're on the topic of holiday and helping families in Braintree, I do want to make an announcement. The Joshua K. Foundation is also looking for additional partners and volunteers for their fourth annual holiday baking bags project. I don't know if B-Cam can get a close-up of this poster. The holiday baking bags, it's an annual initiative, serving families in need by ensuring they have pantry staples and ingredients to make meaningful holiday memories by baking their family recipes for the fall and winter holidays. So each bag contains flour, sugar, salt, baking soda, brown sugar, shortening, vanilla, chocolate chips, and cinnamon, and those are typically items that aren't always available at food pantries, so a really nice opportunity to build some memories for families in need. The bags are $35 worth of ingredients, so if you want to contribute individually, you can reach out to the Joshua K. Foundation. Last year, they packaged over 1,600 bags for local families, and if you want to get your company or organization involved, they're looking for groups of volunteers as well, and that's joshua k-k-a-y-e foundation dot O R G. So thank you to Melissa K. and her foundation for all their work in our community. Other announcements from counselors. Counsel Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. The Braintree Recreation Department is hosting their first trunk or treat. It's a Halloween family fun day, Saturday, October 28th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the Braintree High School parking lot. Costumes are encouraged. If you would like to participate as having a trunk, you do need to register. You have to email the Braintree Rec Department at braintree recreation at gmail dot com. For those children who want to attend with their parents or whoever, you do not need to register, you just show up anytime between 1:00 and 4:00, but it's going to be a great event. They got a lot of good participants so far, so all are welcome to participate in that.
Very fun. Thank you, Counsel Hume. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. The Seasonal Family Flu Clinic, sponsored by the Town of Braintree, is on Monday, October 23rd. It'll be from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's right here at Town Hall. It's first come, first served, and family clinic is offered to adults 18 years or older and students in grades five through 12. Residents and participants are requested to bring their health insurance cards. So again, that's Monday, October 23rd, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Seasonal Family Flu Clinic right here at Braintree Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Counselor Maglio?
Excuse me. The Community Planning Committee of the Council, of which I serve on, along with Counselors Reynolds and Counselor Brian, is meeting tomorrow night at 7:15. We hope to hear status updates on a variety of issues, Peterson Pool, Covanta Transfer Station, the MBTA rezoning maps for Braintree neighborhoods, and the MWRA expansion along Route 37. It's also an opportunity to discuss pests, since I hear about them every time I'm talking to residents, and also ADA accessibility and barriers in and about town, which is kind of another hot-button issue that we tend to hear a lot about. So this meeting is via Zoom, so it's accessible, and I think I may have put out that it starts at 7:00, but it actually starts at 7:15.
Thank you, Counsel Maglio. Any other announcements? All right, moving on to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2023, July 18th, 2023, and August 1st, 2023?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Moving on now, we have, I'm also delighted, we have lots of good news tonight, to welcome Lynn Frano, our Substance Use Prevention Coordinator, to talk about a really exciting announcement, the Braintree Drug-Free Community Support Grant. Thank you so much for being with us, Director Frano.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. So as you all know, I am the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator for the Town of Braintree, was hired in December of 2017. I'm also chairperson of the Braintree Community Partnership, which is a community coalition whose mission is to engage and collaborate with the community in order to foster conditions that support individuals and families and prevent and reduce youth substance use. And I really do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I remember, I think I spoke here in 2015 about the DFC grant before special committee, and that was when I was working in another community, so it's exciting to see that in just a short period of time, we were able to get a grant here for the Town of Braintree. So I want to talk a little bit about the grant, and I want you to know that I'll be using acronym CDC for the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. That is the funder of the grant. It's, we all know it's a federal grant, and I will also be using the acronym DFC, which means Drug-Free Communities. So the goals of the DFC grant include building community capacity to address youth substance use and to reduce youth substance use rates. And in order to support the work of the coalition, the town will receive $125,000 a year between September 30th, 2023, and September 29th, 2028. The town will also be required to provide a non-federal match in either cash or in-kind contributions. The in-kind match I will address on another slide. The CDC requires that there is a program director or principal investigator, a project coordinator, and authorized organization representative. I will take on the duties of program director, principal investigator, and Ed Spellman will be the authorized organization representative. We will be hiring a project coordinator who will work with me to implement our ambitious 12-month action plan. The plan includes administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and parent surveys, analysis of those surveys, attending required training, supporting youth leadership development, and running several community campaigns, and completing all the necessary required reports. On this slide, you will see how the town was able to meet the required non-federal match. My full salary and a percentage of Mary Beth McGrath's and Ed Spellman's salary helped us meet the required match, because Mary Beth, as Director of the Health Department, will be helping out with this grant, especially with processing purchase orders and paying bills and those kinds of things, and Ed has already started helping me with a lot of what we need to proceed with the grant. With this five-year grant, each year in May, we will be required to submit a new budget with a non-federal match and a 12-month action plan, as well as complete the required training and reports. Additionally, we have been, as we have been doing for the past five years, we will continue to follow the Strategic Prevention Framework, a five-step evidence-based process which includes assessment. Oh, look at that. I'm not on the right slide. Sorry. A five-step evidence-based process which includes assessment, capacity building, planning, implementation, and evaluation. And there's a lot of members, we, part of the administering that Youth Risk Behavior survey is really important. That gives us a lot of our data, that gives us, every year, when we look at that data, we can tell if we're making a difference, if we're reducing, helping to reduce some of the rates through some of the programs and. through some of the programs and strategies that we put in place. We will also be required to maintain 12-sector coalition membership, which includes youth, parents, law enforcement, schools, the business community, media, youth-serving organizations, religious or fraternal organizations, civic and volunteer groups, healthcare professionals, state or legal agencies with expertise in substance misuse prevention, and other organizations involved in reducing substance misuse. So, as you can see here on the wheel, I put some pictures of our folks who do help us with that good work, who represent those 12 sectors. And I have to say, we currently have committed individuals who will continue to represent the 12 sectors of the community. Each of them signed a coalition involvement agreement, all of which were submitted as part of the DFC grant application. In addition to our 12-sector representatives, we have many partners involved with the coalition. And you can see some of the pictures of our partners on the side. I'm grateful to each sector representative and partner for their time, support, and commitment to the residents of Braintree. With them, we have been able to accomplish a great deal in a short amount of time. And if you haven't already, please watch our Sixth Annual Community Heroes Awards banquet on B-CAM. The event held each September is my way of thanking and honoring this group of selfless volunteers who helped strengthen and enrich our community. And I want to thank Julia and Meredith for attending, and it is available to watch on B-CAM. Amazing people we work, that work with us. So, there is an opportunity to apply for an additional five years of DFC funding in 2028, which will bring an additional $625,000 for a 10-year total of 1.25 million. And I hope we can do that. I may not be around then. I'll probably be, I'll be 70 years old by then. So, I'm not sure I'm going to be here for that. But anything I could do to help, I certainly will. And I'd like to sum up by saying just how important it is to have youth involved in the coalition. We currently have two interns from Braintree High School and several student members of the '84 movement. And I know that you're familiar with the '84 movement, because they did come and present here a while back. They help build our connections with other young people, and they are committed to building a strong and healthy community. And as adults, we must do everything we can to support youth leadership, decision-making, and involvement within the community. And then, I just want to say that your invitation and time are greatly appreciated. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to open it up to any of my colleagues on the council. Councilor Reynolds?
Madam President, thank you, Lynn, for doing a fantastic job for our community and the dedication that you've put into this. I think what really illustrates the value you bring is your collaborative spirit in being able to bring these people together. I know it's not an easy job to do. You juggle quite a bit. And really, most times, I think it's almost a one-person job to get all that done. But there are other folks, full-time in the town as well as the volunteers that you depend upon, who come through to really help you out and help this program out, I should say. One question I have for you, so I know the primary focus is on preventative, correct?
On youth prevention.
Youth prevention.
Youth substance misuse prevention.
Right. And is this exclusive to just school-age persons?
Yes.
Okay, so a graduate of Braintree High School, a recent graduate of Braintree High School would not be eligible for assistance in this? Or do you have a means to be able to direct that kind of assistance?
We are always looking for people to help us in any way, shape, or form, especially for the work that we do with families that are struggling with addiction. It's that 18- to 25-year-old group is a group that's kind of hanging out there, that maybe when they get to college, they're experimenting, and they're getting involved, and maybe addicted to drugs, alcohol or other drugs. So, I think it's very valuable for young people in that age group to become involved in coalition work. Because this grant, even though it just, it focuses on youth prevention, the coalition itself focuses on helping, you know, supporting families and people touched by addiction. So, we would certainly welcome or help an individual over the age of 18. So, youth in this grant are children between grades 6 to 12.
Right.
We're looking.
Okay.
And they'll be the ones participating in the youth risk behavior surveys.
Terrific. So, thank you for bringing that clarification to me. Again, I wish you nothing but the best. Your effort, your energy. I bet you could, you could go to 70.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Councilor Ryan?
Madam President, so Lynn, this grant, you applied for this grant?
Yes.
Good work. Great job.
Thank you. It was, it's quite an endeavor. I went through, what, four weeks of physical therapy afterwards from sitting on my behind down in that basement every night, you know, 8:30 in the morning till every night, till 10:00 or 10 o'clock. We left with a custodian every night. So, yes, it's, but I did get, I did get a lot of help from members of the coalition. And I did, with legislative earmark funds, I did work with a consultant who was able to help some, which was huge.
Well, 1.25 million dollars that, you know, we got the first half, and we could, probably going to get the second half in years 6 through 10, and it's wonderful. And, you know, when you think about, you can't, there's not any more meaningful work than we could do in the town, helping the youth of Braintree in this, with drug and alcohol addiction. And it's just so important. And I just want to say thank you for the work, and I wish you the best of luck with the resources that you're getting, and good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I just want to also let you know that with another person that can help us, a staff person that can help, especially with, you know, the youth development piece, I will be able to continue on with focus groups and survey, surveying people attached by opioid addiction, because we do have the Opiate Settlement Fund, and I am chairperson of the Opiate Task Force. So, I'm hoping to have a little more time to do some of that work. Not much more time, but there will be some time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Lynn. I know how much work went into this. I think I was reading only nine communities in Massachusetts received this grant this year. So, kudos to Braintree, your team. Yeah, that's worth clapping about.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a lot of money. It's a big deal, and it's, I hope, will catapult this program to even the next level.
Thank you. That's my hope as well, Meredith. Thank you so much. And I just want everyone to know if it's okay, if Sue Samino can share the PowerPoint with you. So, if you need to look at the slides more closely, and if you have any questions, I think the proper procedure is to go through Sue, and she will go through the mayor's office, and then back through me. However that works, we will. I will be happy to answer any questions that you have. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, and have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then, just for any families who are struggling with addiction, please reach out to Lynn or the Braintree Partnership through the town's website. So, thank you again, Lynn. All right, we can now move on to our voting business, starting with 23050, Council President, reappointment of outside auditor, or take up any action relative thereto. At this time, I will refer to Councilor Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, pardon me. The Ways and Means Council met recently and unanimously voted to recommend approval on this motion.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. Are there any councilors who wish to speak? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. Powers &amp; Sullivan has done work for the town of Braintree for a long time. I want to read something out of the report. Powers &amp; Sullivan stated, "We consider the town of Braintree to be an important client. We've tried to manage this relationship as such. We know that Braintree is engaged in this process, and we appreciate working with the town at all levels." To that end, we're proposing to hold our fees firm for another three years. And so, what they've submitted is $61,000 for the proposal, and that's the same as the last four proposals that they've made. So, I think it's very important to show that they're making the commitment. They value us as a customer, and they're making a commitment to hold their costs the same. So, I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Councilor Hume?
I was going to comment very similar. So, as the council stated, the last four, this goes back to 2012, so it's more than four years. They've held their price from 2012 to 2026, of $61,000. I don't know of any other pricing that's come before us or that we know of that has held steady for that. I think Powers &amp; Sullivan does a great job, so I'm supportive of this, and kudos to them for watching our bottom line.
Thank you, Councilor Hume.
I meant to say four contracts. If I said four years, I meant to say the four contracts.
These are four terms.
Yep.
For people at home, don't know, that goes back to 2012.
Thank you. Great points. Councilor Flaherty?
I'll just add that I called the references, and people said glowing things about the company. So, it's not just Braintree that feels good about the work that Powers &amp; Sullivan has done for them. Plenty of communities across Massachusetts, and they, you know, were able to share with me the contract that they're paying for, and we have a very, very, very competitive rate. And furthermore, this is something that the Director of Finance wanted. You know, he has a good relationship with them. They have all kinds of institutional knowledge about Braintree through their work over the years, and that's a huge advantage for them, for us, to be continuing to work with them. And I'm glad that they're willing to do it for such a low cost, because they do great work.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Maglio?
I would like to just remind everyone what we talked about with regard to the annual financial comprehensive, the annual comprehensive financial report, that this year, we didn't get it until after the budget process. And there was a sort of caveat that we discussed, that we have to get it when we're supposed to get it. It's supposed to be done by December 31st. We shouldn't be getting it in June. We need to get it before we start the budget process.
Thank you, Councilor Maglio, and thank you to the Ways and Means Committee for pressing that point. If it, to relay to the community at large, Powers &amp; Sullivan has committed to getting us their report well before the annual budget process starts. So, I believe it's no later than February 2024 for this next cycle. So, again, thank you to all the work from the Ways and Means Committee did on this issue. This is not just a pass-through. Councilor Flaherty was calling references, and Councilor Reynolds and Maglio, they stated, you know, are pressing to make sure that we're getting the results in a timely fashion. So, thank you to that committee for their diligence on this. All right, with that, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. Motion pursuant to Section 611 of the Town Charter through the Braintree Town Council, approve a three-year contract for FY '24, FY '25, and FY '26 for Powers &amp; Sullivan CPA as independent certified public accountants. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right. Next item on the agenda, 23051, Town Council, zoning ordinance text amendments related to tree protection. Amend Section 135-702, landscape and buffer zones. Amend Section 135-711(c)(3)H, or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing, so first, we need to open the public hearing. And is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. With that, I will refer to Councilor Hume, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, for their recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ordinance and Rules met earlier tonight, and we moved unanimously for favorable recommendation on Order 23051.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hume. I sponsored this initially, and I want to thank my colleagues on the council for helping to send it down to the planning board. But if you'll allow me to give a very brief recap for anyone watching at home, and I want to thank the mayor and Director Santucci-Razi and the town solicitor for all their assistance. So, back in July, the town council voted to sponsor this proposed zoning amendment, which pertains primarily to large-scale developers clearing land. And this is what I would consider sort of the third part of our tree protection ordinance. The first applied to public trees on public ways. That was passed by the council in April. The second was with working with the Ways and Means Committee, created a revolving fund to fund tree replacements. That was passed in June. And then, this zoning amendment, again, pertains to developers and new developments, and that received a favorable recommendation from the planning department in September. So, now it is before us to make the formal recommendation, or vote, rather. And I also want to thank Director Santucci-Razi, who is also here to answer any questions. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the general public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none. Is there any councilors with questions or comments? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend the president for the work that she has done on these ordinances associated with protecting the trees in Braintree. We were very lucky. We have a beautiful community, and you just, you've done very excellent work putting these together. And it's just, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan? No questions? All right, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And do we have a motion on the order?
Yes, Madam President. Motion to approve Order 23051 as submitted with planning board recommendations.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. And again, thank you, Director Santucci-Razi, for all of your work and efforts on this. All right, moving on to new business. Is there a motion to move all measures under new business to their respective committees?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. And with that, that ends our business for this evening. Our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, change of day, because the municipal election is on Tuesday, November 7th. We are going to meet next on Wednesday, November 8th, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. As always, thank you so much to the B-CAM team for televising this tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.